Okay, everybody, I'm gonna go ahead and get started. My name is Jessica Hotelling. I am the Housing Program Developer at KHRC. This is the February 2024 Draft Notice of Application Availability Public Hearing. This is for the Kansas Housing Investor Tax Credit Program. I am going to share my screen here in a second. I wanted to let you know that we have several members of our team on the call today available to listen in and will hear your comments and will hear your questions. And then we'll all take those back to discuss after our time together today. So with that, I am going to go ahead and jump right in. Let me share my screen. Okay. Brenna, you are someone I happen to be able to see. Could you nod and let me know if you see my screen, the PowerPoint slide?
I do not yet.
You do not yet. Okay, great, thanks. We practiced this. Let's try that. How about that?
There we go.
Yes, great. Okay, thanks so much. All right. Okay, wanna just give you a brief overview of what our agenda is going to be today. We'll talk. I'm gonna give you a very brief overview of the Kansas Housing Investor Tax Credit Program, the background of it. And we will go through some of the proposed changes that are in the Draft Notice of Application Availability. Alyssa Ice is gonna talk for a few moments about our future funding rounds, and then we'll move into our comment period. So let me. I also see, and I'm sorry, I'm also doing some of managing some of the chat while we're doing this because I'm not sure who else can see it. So, okay, great. Here we go. So the KHITC background, this is a program that was established in 2022 by the Kansas Housing Investor Tax Credit Act. The purpose of the program really is to facilitate investment into counties where there isn't enough housing for their community, and also where housing growth will help support economic development. In order to do that, the state legislature gave KHRC the authority to manage this program. We have 13 million credits as part of our annual allocation that we can issue to builders and developers who are doing this work. And as of December 31st of 2023, KHRC had issued more than 12 million credits into our counties across the state of Kansas, and that had resulted in that or that was directly related to more than $14 million worth of investments that had gone into these communities for housing. So wanted to really highlight the success of the program, how pleased we are with the way it's working, and for all of the folks who are on this call, and I know there are several of you who are out doing this work in our communities, highlight that that's good work and it's the program is doing exactly what it's supposed to. There, within the Notice of Application Availability that was published, there is a lot more information about this program. It provides details regarding the eligible applicants for the program, what the eligible activities are under the program, and also some of the more detailed programmatic pieces related to county sizes and the thresholds for the number of credits that you can apply for and things like that. So I would really encourage you to spend the time looking at that Notice of Availability, Application Availability to be able to look through that. Let me go to the next slide, which then is to talk about some proposed changes to our, what was an RFP previously. And then we have changed to a notification of, I'm sorry, I've got somebody in the waiting room too. I'm sorry, I'm doing several things at one time. So sorry about that, guys. Okay. So this Notice of Application Availability, there are some changes to it that we have made and we wanted to talk through, really highlight what some of those important ones are. And one of them is that we're announcing upfront when our three application due dates are for the first half of 2024. And so you will be able to find that within the notice. We have the first one coming up on April 19th. The other thing that we have done is within this notice is indicate particular eligible applicants for each round. And so you'll see that on April 19th, 2024, our eligible applications that we're going to accept will be for small and medium counties across the state. And then also, we will accept applications for any open MIH grant that was previously awarded. And so what we're looking to do, we know that there are some communities who received MIH grants previously. There are now, for any number of reasons, there's some sort of funding gap that you're trying to fill, and we want to see if maybe the KHITC resource will be helpful to you to do that. And so again, I want to stress that this is for any MIH award that is currently open with KHRC that can come in and apply on April 19th. Then on May 31st of 2024, we're gonna open it up to all county sizes, small, medium, and large. And on July 12th of 2024, there will be another application due date for, again, small, medium, and large counties. Another piece that we added to our notice is under the current priorities. This is Section E. And we've added a target construction start date. This is somewhat related, this is also related to what I'm gonna talk about next, which is a readiness to proceed section, which we added to our application required elements. The Kansas Housing Investor Tax Credits have a deadline by which they have to be issued by KHRC. And so what that means is projects need to be not maybe in their very beginning stages, but need to be, have some planning done on them already. We're looking to have projects come in with a September 1st, 2024 start date. The reason for that is because these credits that we're looking at issuing right now are from KHRC's 2023 allocation of credits. Those credits KHRC can carry forward until December 31st of 2024. And if we don't issue them by December 31st of 2024, then we lose them. And so we want to make sure that we are awarding projects that will be able to request those credits for the investments that have been made into the projects. And so that is the reasoning behind having a, including a target construction start date under our current priorities. Then the next piece, which I just mentioned, is a readiness to proceed section that we added under the application required elements. Evidence of site control, cost estimates for your overall project, estimated date of receipt of building permits. Again, that is so that we are able to see what your timeline is and make sure that your timeline on your project and the investment that you're making into your project lines up with when the credits need to be issued from KHRC. Attachment A, which is the reservation fee for your, for a project. We have increased the amount of the reservation fee from 3% to 5%. That full 5% of your allocation, the award amount, is not due at the time of that you sign your reservation agreement, but 10% is due at that time. And then the last major change that we made to the notice that we wanted to make sure that we highlighted is there's an attachment D, and some of you may remember that in the RFP previously, it was a flowchart where we outlined all of the required documents to submit along with your application. We've changed that a little bit. We've made it into a checklist and clarified some of the items that we're looking for as part of that application. And with that, I am going to turn it over to Alyssa to talk about a couple of other funding opportunities that we have.
Hi. Hi, everyone. I'm Alyssa Ice. I'm the Director of Housing Development. I just wanted to touch base on two of the things that we have been talking about and the, well, one of the things, the revolving loan fund that we've been talking about for a while, and then the future of the MIH, which I know a lot of KHITC and MIH projects come in together. So wanted to touch on those things just quickly. First, the revolving loan fund. So some of you may remember, or may know that, so we received an allocation of $20 million in 2022 for a revolving loan fund, and then we received an additional 20 million in 2023. However, the language in that, though, those funds say that we have to loan the money to cities and counties. That has proven to be, it has complications. And mostly those are related to the cash basis law and the ability of cities to take on loans and the hurdles that they're needing to jump through to take on a loan. So, but there's currently some language the legislature is contemplating that would allow us to broaden who we can loan funds to. And so with, and that proposal is that we would be allowed to loan, to loan funds to developers and nonprofits and cities and counties, and it also would allow us to loan money to cities and counties and it not affect the cash basis requirements. So, you know, once we see how that shakes out, once we see what passes as the legislature moves through, it's going, is going to really define how we can move forward with those funds. So just wanted to alert you all on that. So as always, watch the website, make sure that you're on our different email chains and our different email distribution groups that we utilize. Also, the, for the competitive MIH, as you know, the, well, many of you know, the, how the MIH used to work is we would get $2 million about in June, and we'd open up as a, an RFP, a competitive RFP in the fall, and we'd make those announcements at the end of the year. So currently, there is money in the legislature for a competitive MIH. Right now, it's, it's at $12 million, which is, could be very exciting. And so how we see that working is that if it passes, then we would do a fall RFP, much like we have done in the past. And again, watch the website and watch to see how those things are progressing as we go through the year. Thank you.
Thanks, Alyssa. Okay, so moving on to the next piece. So we're gonna enter the public comment period now. Brenna and I will be looking at the chat box, a couple of items about this. If you could type your comment in the chat box or unmute your mic, we have everyone on the call muted, but you should have the option to unmute yourself. During this period, we are accepting comments, we are accepting questions. This meeting is being recorded so that we have record of that. We will do our best, because it's being recorded, to then post it on our YouTube channel within the next few days so that it is out there for anyone who wants to go back and refer to it. So want to be clear that really what we're looking for, we're looking to have questions come in and comments come in that our team will need to consider before we publish the final draft of this document. And so if you could, please make those while we're here. If you come up, if you think of a question later that you, after you've had some time to think about the contents of today's call, please feel free to send that to us in writing. The email address is there, mih@kshousingcorp.org. We would really can't strongly encourage you enough to please send them to us in writing rather than give us a call. There are several of us who will be reviewing the information and reviewing the questions. And certainly, we don't want anything to get lost in translation. So if you would please put them in writing to us, that would be helpful to us to make sure that we are all reviewing the same information. And then finally, all comments will be accepted until the end of the day on Wednesday, March 6th of 2024. So with that, if anyone would like to kick off and unmute with a question, that would be great, and I will also jump into the chat box and see what is in there. I will go ahead and say in the chat box, there's one question, to be clear, the May and July application applications are open to others, not just open MIH grants. So the May and July are open to small, medium, and large counties who do not yet, who do not have open MIH grants. The only round where we are looking to add addition, provide additional resources into projects that already have an MIH grant is that first round in April. One of the other questions that we have is can construction start date be before September 24? This, I'm glad that that's a good question, and that is something that our team is talking through right now about what those limitations might look like for actual construction start dates and when the awards are made. Will we be able to pair the Kansas Housing Investor Tax Credit with a later MIH grant? I think Alyssa just talked a little bit about that round that's coming maybe later in the year. But that is something that we will talk through and then also put some guidance on, Alyssa, unless you wanted to jump right in.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I think that's a good question. I think the intent is that the, these would be KHITC-only applications. And then when we have those rounds of the later year, or when we have the MIH funds available in the later year, there would also be KHITC available probably for the next year. The next year's KHITC for those rounds.
There's a question about how quickly we expect award decisions to be made on the April rounds of KHITC. We will try to give some good guidance about that too, after we have some time to chat about it. This is the first time that we have not been doing competitive MIH and competitive KHITC review at the same time. So the timeframe is going to be a little bit different probably than what you have seen in the past. So this, someone asked about the best place to find information to read the application. This draft notice is published on KHRC's website. It is under the Housing Partners page, under Moderate Income Housing. There, and it has its own banner, it's its own link where you can find this draft. Once the final draft is available and published, we will also publish the Excel workbook that contains an Excel application piece of this, but that's not available yet. I appreciate, I very much appreciate this comment. In regards to the KHITC application, we're hoping to get more information about the pay-in schedule and what that entails. That language is gonna change with the new application, and hopefully that will be more clear when it is published. It's not something that our entire team has completely talked through and seen. So stay tuned for that, but that will, that will definitely be clearer in the next Excel workbook that comes out. Alyssa, there's a question. What is the bill number to amend the revolving loan fund?
All right, there's too many buttons. I actually, I'll get back, I, and I think, yep, yep. Aaron is going to help me get that number, and so I'll let you know when I have it.
Thanks. Do existing grants have priority in round one, or do new, do new applications have equal consideration? I would say that we all will be, what we're gonna look at is your overall application and whether or not it's competitive. We won't, and an open MIH, a KHITC application that is related to an open MIH grant will not necessarily be prioritized over a new KHITC application.
So the House Bill, oh, can I tell you?
Please, go ahead.
It's House Bill 28, HB 2802.
And if you're interested, while we're on that topic, the bill that established the KHITC program is House Bill 2237. And then there was an amendment to that bill last year, not to just a couple of sections of it, and that's in Senate Bill 17. So if that's of interest to you, if that's something you want to look at, you can look those up. The scoring criteria, we have within the draft notice, there is a section that goes through what our evaluation guidelines are. So I would encourage you to take a look at those and make sure that as you're working through putting your application together, you're meeting all of the required criteria, all of the required elements, and then taking a look at those that evaluation guidelines.
The House Bill that was mentioned, I argue, Jessica.
Good, thanks.
Can you repeat that House Bill? I didn't, couldn't hear the, the latter wins, but not the first ones, if you could.
Yeah, sure. It is 2237.
And for the revolving loan fund, it's 2802 HB.
Thank you very much, 2802. Thank you.
Thanks, sure. Is the deadline already passed for the April application? No, it is not. We will be accepting applications on that April date. You can submit until 5:00 PM. So Bill, I see your question about the MIH and KHITC. If you would send that to our MIH inbox, we can talk more about that. The question is whether, if they're structuring a development that needs both MIH and KHITC to be viable, are we recommending that they apply in 2025? Apply for MIH later and then KHITC in '25. I think we'd want to talk some more about what the details of that project are. So maybe we can set up a time to discuss that. Question came in, what is the average sales price of the credits? What we saw in 2023 is that on average, credits were selling at about 85 cents per credit. There was a swing in there. Some of them were a little bit lower, some of them were higher. When we averaged it out, it came out to about 85 cents. That, that's the end of the questions in the chat box. Is there anyone else who would like to pop a question in the chat or unmute to comment or that would like to ask a question?
Hey, Jessica. Are you guys gonna be having any other hearings before the April deadline?
We are not. No, this is the only one.
Okay. All right, so get your ducks in a row now, right?
Yes.
Well, I just wanted to pop on and say I appreciate you guys taking the time to do this today.
Thank you. I appreciate you being here.
All right.
There's a question, whether we have a, any kind of database of potential tax credit buyers. We don't right now. That is something that we've talked about compiling. Because the program had been so new and the first batch of credits weren't actually sold or transferred until September of 2023, and we haven't had a lot of time to work through that. What I can tell you is that the primary purchaser of the tax credits so far have been banks. Sometimes it's individuals. There have been some local businesses. Primarily what we're seeing are banks that are interested in purchasing the credits. There's a question about whether these credits can be paired with historic tax credits. And we are with historic credits, and we do have projects that come in that have historic credits in them and that we have awarded KHITC. So in the, in the RFP or in the notice that we have published, there is a section, let me go back to my notes. So I can tell you, the question is where do we find a list of what county is considered to be small and what is considered to be medium? And that's outlined in the RFP. It's also in, or I'm sorry, in the notice, and it's also listed in the House Bill. But it might be easier to take a look at the notice, and you can find it on page 12. And it's under the section called Credit Disbursement, where it lists some of those programmatic details that we'll be looking at as we're evaluating applications. And Jacob, in response to your question about the hearing, while we won't have a hearing again until the April 19th deadline, our team at that mih@kshousingcorp.org were available to answer questions. The, as you read through the, the notice, you'll see that in order to apply, applications come in through a web-based portal called Proquorum. We use a web-based platform for that. Once we have a work center set up for you, then we do all of our communication with your team through Proquorum. So after that Notice of Application gets sent in, we can set that up. And that'll be how we can communicate about the, the project that you might be working on. There's a question about whether anyone has come across the issue that if the tax credits have been issued to for-profits or to individuals, if it is an income tax event, and that is something that I think we'll have to look into. I don't have an answer to that at this point. So if you have, there's a question about having questions answered, people who are new to this, this process, please feel free to reach out to that mih@kshousingcorp.org email inbox. That is monitored by all of our Moderate Income Housing Division staff. So there are several of us who see those emails as they come in, and we'll be sure that we get your questions answered. And we understand that it may be helpful to set up a phone call for folks who are really just beginning to learn about this program, and we're happy to do that as well. for folks who are really just beginning to learn about this program, and we're happy to do that as well. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and oh, I could. Jason, I know you had popped a couple of things in the chat earlier. Would you mind putting that mih@kshousingcorp.org in the chat, please? That would be helpful. Thank you. Thanks. Okay, I'm going to go ahead and go to the next slide. Okay, so our next steps are, again, as I mentioned earlier, the comments or questions can be submitted to that mih@kshousingcorp.org inbox by Wednesday, March 6th. And then our hope, our plan is that the final notice of application availability and all of the application materials will be released on Friday, March 15th. Related to that, that information will be a notice, a notice will be sent by email to anyone who has subscribed to KHRC's email list. And if you go to our the KHRC homepage on our website, there is a place where you can find to hit subscribe. It'll pull up a page for you where you can subscribe to receive emails from any of the programs that KHRC manages that you might be interested in. It doesn't have to just be KHITC or MIH. So I strongly encourage you, if you are interested in applying for KHITC, if you'll want to review the application materials, and you haven't yet subscribed to that email list, please do so. Because again, that's how the notice will go out when all of this information becomes available for you. And thanks, Jason. Jason just popped into the chat, the link to our how to subscribe, that'll take you straight to the page where you can subscribe to any of those email lists that are of interest to you. I'm going to go back to the slide, so we've got that mih@kshousingcorp.org email address up again. In the notice of application availability, you'll see at the beginning, you'll, there's my name, Jessica Hotelling, and my email address. Brenna Nold, who is our MIH processor, who also works very closely with us on the KHITC program, her information is there as well. But in order for all of our team to see your questions and comments, again, really stressing that you email that in mih@kshousingcorp.org inbox. Okay, if there aren't any other questions or comments, then appreciate all of you joining us today, giving us some of your time today, and looking forward to working with you. Thank you.